Wanted to say thank you very much for coming out to another President's Update. Let me tell you a little bit about what we're continuously working on, which is of course our Clarksburg discussions and we have pushed back the actual total council discussion date from this Tuesday until the 3rd. I did want to clear up some misconceptions that have been out there in speculation about why that meeting was moved. With the numerous snow days that we had, council staff had actually emailed our clerk and asked for additional time to be able to create a very complex packet of information for all of the council members. And understanding that while I was there at the majority of the meeting, she wanted to make sure that all of the details associated with the different recommendations that were made by the committee were placed in that packet. And so she had asked for the additional time of one week and so we did postpone that. So contrary to what's been put out there, and it's very unfortunate that there have been these misconceptions that have been espoused by certain groups and organizations, that this has somehow been an attempt for me to either sway the process or to kowtow to any particular group. That is definitely not the case. And you know, we as a council will make a decision again that I hope reflects both the input that we received from the community of Clarksburg along with the information that we received regarding the science from our planning staff and from the folks that we paid a lot of money to give us advice. So, I wanted to talk about snow removal. I've gotten a number of different comments about some of the snow removal concerns. You may have seen a memo written by Councilmember Reamer about a sidewalk snow removal plan. Look, let me just be very clear. The unprecedented nature of this snowstorm is not something that is of the norm here in Montgomery County. I've lived here all my life and very rarely do we get snowstorms like the one we received. I will highlight for you that just a few weeks before, prior to this most recent large snowstorm, I was before you touting our Department of Transportation about the great work that they did in clearing our roads and sidewalks and streets, both in neighborhoods as well as our main roads. So the problem is not with our system. The problem was just that as every other jurisdiction here in the Washington metropolitan area experienced, we had unprecedented snow in my area in Germantown. It was a little over two feet. You know, snow like that, for you to try and place it somewhere is very, very difficult. And I think our crews did the absolute best that they could. I applaud all of the efforts of the men and women who spent numerous hours out there trying to clear our roads and make sure that things were passable. But I will remind all of our constituents out there, as I was tweeting that day, live tweeting in between snowing and shoveling my neighborhood. If you see an area that's not shoveled, it might not be just because that person doesn't want to shovel it. It might be that that person is either incapacitated, you know, we had a person who had a broken foot who was a neighbor of mine and we shoveled their driveway and walkway. I mean, these are the things that happen. This is how community comes together. And so we ask that when we have unprecedented incidents like this, that we do our part. You know, the county can't do it all in reality and so it is important for us to try and chip in wherever possible to help our fellow neighbors. And I think that that way, you know, we can make sure that all of our sidewalks are clear because I do agree, it is important for us to clear for our pedestrians so that they can walk. But at the same time, again, you know, when we have two feet of snow, it's very difficult to really do something about that. So we'll certainly have a hearing that will give us the ability to talk a little bit about what our snow plans are and how we reacted in the snowstorm. I think that you'll find that it's no different from what we've done with any of our other snowstorms. I mean, you know, we have a certain amount of equipment and there's a certain number of hours in the day and there's only so much you can do within that timeframe. And when you exceed the levels, as again, we saw with others, this is what happens and you do have a multi-day incident instead of something that's handled within a 24-hour period. Last but not least, I wanted to talk a little bit about our CIP budget and we're certainly going into a lot of the discussions. I just met with our Health and Human Services. I know that TNE, Transportation, Energy, and Environment was meeting this morning. So we're starting to delve into some of those issues and you'll see some of those things that are coming out of committee as recommendations. As the council's lead for libraries, we went over the library CIP budget this morning and had a great deal of discussion about Clarksburg and the potential of Clarksburg Library and where that would be located based on the dedicated land that really isn't adequate in terms of the initial proposal for what we're looking to do with Clarksburg Library. And so we'll be actively working with the community. That'll be a part of the discussion that comes up at our community meeting that will be, bless you, as a part of that community meeting that will be on Wednesday evening. And you know, we'll see where we go. But I think that our Clarksburg community certainly deserves a library before an outlet mall. And that's one of the things that I think is a priority for us is to make sure that we're delivering on some of those public amenities that are so, so important to all of our communities throughout Montgomery County. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Regarding the snow removal, do you think, and Councilmember Reamer was talking about a bill that might make some changes to the law, I guess, is there any need to make changes to the law?
Look, I think that if this most recent snowstorm hadn't happened, folks hadn't said that there was a problem with our system. And so understanding that this is an anomaly storm, this isn't the norm, means that why would we be reacting to something that's an anomaly versus the norm? And setting legislation based on an anomaly versus what we see on an average daily basis. There were no complaints and we had a decent amount of snow with a prior snowstorm. But this one was not the case. This is the anomaly. This is the non-average snowstorm. And so I think that our laws should reflect what we see as our normal capacity and I think that our residents do a really good job. Now, I have heard some concerns from residents about some of those businesses or individuals that aren't doing what they're doing. And so certainly what might be warranted is an additional campaign after this as a part of this hearing to make sure we're educating people on what the law is and what their responsibilities are. So I think that that's important. But should we be changing the law based on something that, you know, happens every four or five years? I don't think so.
But what about the concern that you're trying to create these more livable, walkable areas with more downtown centers? And if those people, business districts or individuals, aren't shoveling sidewalks or bike paths, those are becoming a major commuter route. Roger Berliner put out a letter saying, hey, look, the Capitol Crescent Trail, unless you're out there on a Monday through Friday, you don't realize how much of it's become a commuter route. What would you say to try to put a little teeth in some regulation that when you don't shovel or de-ice, because it's not always a two-foot storm, sometimes it's a thin layer of ice that, you know, people can't get to where they're going?
One of the challenges with that is I would say that you'd have to have a person that would be out there. I mean, let's just envision what something like this looks like. And when I look at legislation that's proposed, I go to the next step of seeing, okay, so what does that mean? So if there was, say, a person in downtown Rockville that didn't shovel their walkways, am I having a police officer that's out there driving around, looking at where walkways aren't shoveled and then going into that business and issuing a ticket? And then what happens? I mean, those are the kinds of things where again, when I look at the ultimate result, when you talk about teeth, what is it getting us is the same as us having an educational campaign. So it isn't about raising money or finding anybody. It's about making sure that they're clear. So I think the best thing for us to do is until we've identified that there's someone that's egregiously violating the law that currently exists in terms of that 24 hours after a snowstorm, you have to clear your sidewalks. I mean, it's very clear and like I said, we were live tweeting it out and putting it on Facebook and people were retweeting it. I know my MC Media was out there retweeting that. So I think it's important for us. Everybody was talking about it. The news media outlets were talking about it and reminding people. That's the best that you can do because I can tell you that if we're really going to start finding the grandmother who's in her house because she can't shovel her walkway and nobody wants to step up and help her do that, we're going down the wrong road. And that's not where I want us to be. What this needs to be is us working as a community together. And if it means that we have to reach out to some of the businesses and ask our communities if you can identify businesses that didn't do what they were supposed to do, certainly we need to step up and have conversations with those businesses before we enact some sort of additional legislation.
On a related note to snow removal, I know the county's been trying to take advantage of the weather bowl now to fill potholes. You know, how serious did the snow affect, you know, pothole replacement and what's going on there?
You know, it's seriously impacted our budget as a whole and so that budget affects everything from potholes to our normal resurfacing projects. A lot of those weren't happening now because it's the winter time. But as we start to get into the spring, I anticipate that we'll be seeing some sort of supplemental coming over from the county executive. My initial conversations with him have been along the lines of, do we have enough that we've set aside for additional snow removal if we do have any additional storms between now and the end of the snow season? And then also what that means for us when it comes to budget implications for the roads because a lot of our roads are extremely damaged throughout the region. And so it might mean that we might be looking at some additional money that we'll have to allocate to really get our roads back up to speed for the upcoming spring.
Do you think that the county during the warmer months of the year needs to do more about being proactive about filling potholes so that it doesn't come down to the winter months that these things are happening?
Well, I would say this, either way, you know, whether you've had a freshly resurfaced road or not, once those plows hit and especially with the kind of storms that we've been getting, it truly tears up the roads regardless. So the maintenance aspect, I don't think plays into it as much. Certainly you could argue that while a pothole that was smaller got bigger from the plows. But I mean, beyond that, it really is just ensuring that we try and keep up as best as possible and actually are reactive very quickly to when we see the concerns that are out there and being able to fill them, which is more of a budgetary matter than a procedural matter.
Do we have a dollar figure attached to how much it costs to clear the roads and how much it costs to fill both sides yet?
Not yet, but that's something that we'll be talking about at that hearing because, you know, from the budget implications aspect, that's something that I'm paying very close attention to. I also want to make sure that from an allocation standpoint, again, while this was an anomaly storm, if what we're setting aside and allocating as far as emergency and reserve funds is enough for what we need to do with some of the impending years. But I do want to, and I have to certainly give credit and applaud the county executive because other jurisdictions that are throughout this Washington metropolitan region who had not allocated and had separate snow budgets have already gone well above. And you've heard that throughout, that's been reported in the media. So Montgomery County is actually better positioned when it came to not impacting our budget as heavily as some of our other surrounding jurisdictions that didn't allocate as much for snow removal.
Again, but when is that hearing?
I don't think the date has been set yet. We're still trying to coordinate that with our clerk.
Was there any IT issue with reporting streets that needed snow removal? Like, was it a problem?
That actually was a problem and that's something that we will be looking at, not just IT, but also with our 3-1-1 system that was down for a while as well. I received a number of complaints from residents that were very concerned that they couldn't report on the online system, that their streets had not been plowed yet. And I think that that added to the level of frustration. They wanted to make sure, so they actually contacted our office and we were open for business. My great legislative aide Danielle Amoye was actually taking a lot of those emails and phone calls. I received a couple of those myself and responded and made sure that we emailed transportation and gave them the updates as to where those streets were. So, you know, it is important for us when we look at this upcoming hearing to make sure that we're talking about those particular issues because that's where we can certainly do a much better job.
So do we know what the problem was?
I have not been informed as to what the challenge was, whether it was a server error or whether it was something actually with the snowstorm itself that might have knocked out a line or something. I haven't gotten that information yet, but I think we'll get that at the hearing.
Do we know when that occurred? Did it occur immediately after the snow stopped or the next day?
I think it was the following day is when I had received the most reports. I actually was using the system myself just to kind of give people feedback through Facebook and Twitter for people that were asking where the snowplows were in particular areas at certain times. So it was up for a while at the very beginning of the storm. I think it was that following day that we saw that it had started to go down and was giving people error messages.
And do you know off the top of your head how much we've spent on snow removal this year or even how much we've budgeted?
I don't have that information for you as of yet, but I'll make sure that we get that to you later on this afternoon as far as what we've budgeted. I don't know what we've spent. I had asked the county executive for that figure and they were still compiling some of that information when I talked to him this weekend.
Tomorrow, major announcement, Tuesday, what's it about?
Tomorrow's announcement will be about something that's how this county is certainly moving forward in the right direction when it comes to being one of the best counties to live in this great nation of ours. And so it'll be a great opportunity for us to talk a little bit about, you know, why people choose to live here in Montgomery County, why businesses locate here in Montgomery County, and why we're suggesting to everybody that Montgomery County is one of the best places to live, work, and play.
This is the conference with the county executive?
Yes, it is.
So are you saying that given the storm, the quantity of snow that fell, that the job that Montgomery County did digging out neighborhoods was adequate?
I think so. When we look at again, the unprecedented level, look, there are going to be streets that didn't get plowed for a day or so when you have the amount of snow that we had. I mean, in my neighborhood, I will tell you that we've already gotten an email from our HOA that is responsible for some of our roads, that they're looking at doing an additional snow assessment fee because our budget went overboard in terms of this most recent snow in addition to all the other snowstorms that we've had. This is something that was unprecedented. Nobody could have prepared for something like this and we saw that up and down the East Coast, not just here in Montgomery County, not just here in this region. And so from that perspective, I think that we did a great job, just like we did before. Again, the problem with saying that you're doing a great job is that you understand that some streets did not get plowed for a day and a half, sometimes two days, that there were still turn lanes that weren't available. Look, my street on 118, and I'll just use my personal anecdote, going down 118 and turning onto Crowns Gate, there's a turning lane that goes into it. People had to turn from the main lane and this is a very 40, 45, 40 mile an hour highway, basically. So to have a person stop to make that right turn and they're slowing down because of the snow that's out there, I mean, is that acceptable in the sense of, is that what we want? No. But we have to do what we can within reason. And with the level of snow that we saw that was out there, I think that that is acceptable within what we were faced with and we tried to do the best that we could.
Because the snow map was down, I personally spoke to a 3-1-1 operator around 11 o'clock. He told me that only 20% of the neighborhoods on Friday had been plowed. And Gaithersburg had also just sent me an email saying 100% of their streets were plowed at the very same time. So I'm just wondering, when you have the hearing, will you be able to show us?
Absolutely, absolutely. And not to disparage Gaithersburg, but I can tell you that I received calls from, because I represent the Montgomery Village area and parts of non-incorporated Gaithersburg, that people were complaining about streets that were not plowed. I don't think that anybody truly had a handle on this storm in terms of full removal of all snow and all, you know, it depends on how they calculate what they consider to be, you know, is one pass considered 100%? Because if that's the case, then, you know, I'm sure that you'll see a lot of jurisdictions had a one pass. But what did that mean when it came to refreezing? What did it come to, all those other kinds of things that go in? Did it mean that all lanes were passable or is it just one lane? So how you measure? And those are some of the things that we will talk about at the hearing as well. How do you measure what is deemed, you know, your 100%? What do you deem as passable? All those kinds of things, just to make sure that we're educating the public so we can have a greater conversation about this, so that we can make sure that expectations are truly met, so people understand what it is they look to see when it comes to these particular levels that we're talking about.
Did you get more complaints from one area than another? I know in the past that the folks in Silver Spring and former councilmember Urban and councilmember Hukaro brought up, you know, we're getting these questions. Can you tell us, is Bethesda getting more, you know, better treatment than New York? Did you get any of that sense that?
I didn't. And being a district council member, I mean, part of it was the reaction based on what folks were contacting me about as council president. We got a few more that were more generic in terms of, but I can tell you from the news reporting that was going on, from Jackie Benson who was complaining about Rockville and Potomac to folks that were complaining about other areas, I think it was generic throughout the county. There was no particular region that, you know, was clear and everybody else had problems. I think that we saw issues throughout the county, which is indicative. I mean, the snow fell at pretty much an even click amongst all of the areas. So, and that's one of the things too to remember is that oftentimes with some of our snowstorms, the southern regions get less snow than the northern regions do. This is a case where that didn't happen. And so you had, while there was a differential, it wasn't as large and you still had a huge amount of snow that was in some of the down county areas. That's normally not the case. Normally down county areas will get a light dusting, a couple inches, whereas your up county regions might get more snow. And so I think that leads to a lot of the challenges that you mentioned, Kate, when it comes to saying that one got, you know, better treatment than the other, well, there's less snow. This is one where that didn't happen and so I think that that was reflective also in what you saw in terms of still some of the roads that remained unpassable.
You call this snow unprecedented? Why do you use that term when Montgomery County's gotten far more snow in the past than, you know, 12 or 14 inches than it's gotten 20 inches or more?
Well, in Germantown, I mean, we had 27 inches. So I mean, I can't recall the last time in recent years that we've gotten 27. It was probably about, I guess, four, five years ago? Yeah, yeah, five years ago. So I mean, that's, that to me is unprecedented. Those aren't norms. And then the time before that, when that happened, was again, I think another seven, eight years, something like that. So again, at that same sort of time interval, to me, is not the norm. It's definitely something that's outside of the norm for us. Now, should we be trying to strategize and predict every five years, maybe we need to be prepared? I don't know. That's a whole different story. But when it comes to this year, I think it was very unique for us in that sense.
Shouldn't the county be prepared for when unique circumstances happen?
Sure. And I think that, you know, we try and do what we can when it comes to being reactive and responsive. I mean, there's no, you know, it would be different if we kind of packed up our trucks and went home and said, look, you know, we'll just deal with it later. That's not the case. You had men and women working around the clock to try and make things happen. And so I think from that perspective, we were doing what we were tasked to do, which was react to a very large snowstorm and try and clear out as much as possible. But at the same time, I mean, I have to give deference to those crews in terms of understanding that this is not what they normally deal with and it takes a lot longer to deal with that large amount of snow.
We talked to a couple of people who would say that some of the snow clearing was a little too good in that they used a piece of equipment, I believe it was state, that shot snow literally shattering their windows. Someone said the side of their building looked like it had been strafed with gunfire because of the rocks and ice and debris. And it sounds goofy, but it was actually pretty impressive what this thing did. Have you gotten many complaints? We got Germantown and Rockville, the two areas. What's the story out of that? What were you able to find out?
We received the same information and that'll be something that again, we talk about when it comes to DOT and their coordination with SHA, with our State Highway Association to make sure that they are responsive to that. They have apologized and really again, with utilizing this equipment is not something that they normally do. And so maybe there needs to be a little bit more of the coordination and practice with utilizing this kind of equipment and making sure that they're putting forth procedures that will allow them to do that safely and remove that kind of level of snow, much to what you were talking about. So I think again, there's a lot that can be learned and gleaned from us really having this hearing, which is why I'm looking forward to it in terms of best practices and how we move forward. And some of that will be that. I also, many of you saw the videos of people getting swept under by, you know, plows that came by and, you know, shot snow onto sidewalks where people were walking. And so it's all those kinds of things that we need to make sure that we're having conversations about best practices. Again, it doesn't rise to the level of where we need to do some sort of legislation around it. We just need to talk and make sure that we have the processes that are in place to make sure that mistakes like that don't happen again. Ryan?
Great. I'm talking a little bit about libraries and the executive and his savvy proposals called for a change in the way the county deals, but rather than constructing new libraries, I think the term is refreshing existing structures. Is that something that you support or is there any concern that that may not be enough?
No, I actually do completely support it. It's something that in conjunction with Director Parker Hamilton, we've been talking about for the past two years now. And I think it's a great direction for us to go in, understanding the challenges that we're faced at libraries like Gaithersburg and Alney that shut down for a tremendous amount of time and what that did to that community in terms of not allowing us to deliver on the services that are so vital and important to it. And so I think that now moving in this direction, we can keep our libraries open while still making sure that we're changing and keeping up to date with our 21st century when it comes to technology access, when it comes to how the egress of going through the building and being able to find things easier, all of that matters. And so I think that it represents a new way for us to make sure that we can address all of our libraries quicker, eliminate the process of us having to shut down libraries for long periods of time while also delivering to our communities a very important resource, which is our community hub libraries.
There was a report last week about the unemployment rate being at an all-time low. Your reaction?
I think that it's great, but I think that that's no reason why we should stop. We have to do so much more. It still means that we have, you know, thousands of people that still remain out of work that want to work and we need to try and do everything that we can to create economic development opportunities for them, much in line with what I've been talking about when it comes to creating jobs here in this county and continuing to focus on that. I think that it's a great direction for us and it's a great selling point in terms of that, you know, we're doing the right things and trying to put us forward when it comes to economic development. But it also again, still highlights the need, you know, we need to do a lot more. I was actually, thank, thank you for bringing it up because I was actually at ARC of Montgomery County last night, which deals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we were talking about job opportunities for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And they've actually seen a reduction in the opportunities that are there for some of their folks. And so I've already started talking with David Dice, with Procurement, about ways in which we can dovetail some of the opportunities that they might have to be able to secure some county contracts for some of these organizations that do great work with, again, making sure that all of our constituents here in Montgomery County, regardless of your level of ability, have an opportunity to work and provide for yourself because that's something that's not talked about a lot, but I think is going to be at the forefront of us as we continue to move forward when it comes to economic development.
Budget, really, I don't know if you've really looked at the, if you guys have handled the MCPS budget too much yet.
Not yet.
But when you do get to that, it always seems like, you know, arts programs are among the first things schools cut when they get lots of money. So how do you balance, you know, making sure that money's being put in the areas of the greatest need, but at the same time, you know, preserving arts programs that, you know, kids do need and are important?
Well, let me just say this, I just want to correct something you said because I think that arts are needed. And so when it comes to STEM, I'm one of the folks who believe that it should be STEAM and you certainly should add the A in making sure that the arts are a component of things that we focus on and how to move forward. I'm a little bit biased because my wife is a hairstylist and so when it came to that artistic creative nature that I really didn't have, I was a math science guy, that it is important. And I see it with my daughters who play music. My daughter's a pianist and violinist and those are the kinds of things that really matter. She sings in the choir as well. It's really, it's one of those things where, and you see how that ties into some of the other things because she's great at math. And it's, and those ties are there. There's no question that the ties between arts and the very STEM principles that we're supporting are connected. And so I think that we've got to push for that. We've got to continue to push for that. I think that you see with our PTSAs that we are pushing for that. I know I was just at the Montgomery County Alliance of Black School Educators, had their talent showcased the other night and I was there witnessing the great talent that's there via some of our MCPS teachers. And that was a part of the conversation in the program. And they were really advocating for making sure that we continue to focus on the arts in our public schools and how much of a difference it makes for our children. Again, as we talk about opportunities, right? And this is the most important thing that I will continue to talk to you about throughout the entire year. Opportunities are key for everyone and giving people more opportunities so that they can do whatever it is that they want to do that they feel makes them successful is a benefit for us. And so being able to be embracing of career readiness as we embrace college readiness, we also need to be embracing of making sure that folks we also need to be embracing of making sure that folks understand that all of the different subjects that we have in our school systems matter, and they're all needed.
This weekend, you were at a gathering of leaders talking about the state of Black Montgomery County.
Yes.
And in light of the case in Florida recently, and I know that this became a discussion when we were talking about curfews in downtown Silver Spring, are young African-Americans regarded differently? Are they treated differently in schools when it comes to suspensions? What would you say to those issues? What is the status of young African-Americans in the county?
Well, let me just say this. Look, the state of Black Montgomery is strong. And so, let me preface by saying that, does that mean that we stop, just like anything else? No. We need to make sure that there are still opportunities that are provided to a lot of our minorities in this county as we continue to grow as a very diverse county. I think that we need to be understanding and accepting of the fact that there are still challenges that face minorities in this community. There is still prejudice, regardless of the fact of whether we have a black president or not, that still exists. We need to be real about that and understanding of that. That, I think, will continue in this nation for quite some time. But I think that Montgomery County is certainly one of the beacons of hope for this nation when it comes to seeing the level of support that we continue to give and embracing of our minority communities and the diversity that's here. However, I think that part of the enemy of that progress is to simply stop because we said that we've gotten to a certain point. We need to continue to push to make sure that we are breaking down barriers that exist not only amongst minorities, but, as I talked about with the ARC of Montgomery County last night, those perceptions exist for all different kinds of groups throughout. And a person with Down Syndrome is certainly looked at very differently from someone who doesn't have Down Syndrome, where it's visible and you can see those differences, and there's a perception that's there. Those are the same kinds of perceptions that unfortunately exist for a young man who's walking into a clothing store with his pants hanging around his ankles, and, you know, there's a perception that's there. Now, is part of that self-inflicted? Certainly. And that's why I try and make sure that as a part of state of Black Montgomery, what we do is we educate people to make sure we don't feed into stereotypes. That's one of the things that's important. But at the same time, you know, those things still exist, and we still have work to be done. But I'm very happy to be blessed to be in Montgomery County, a place that is accepting and nurturing and supportive of all of the members of our community and allowing them to be successful and even, you know, represent this great county of ours. Ryan?
At that event Saturday, former councilman Urban made the comment that, oh, Montgomery likes to think of itself as a very progressive community, that behind the scenes, that's not always the case. What did you get in reaction to that comment?
Well, I mean, it's kind of what I've said. Look, you know, there's no secret that, you know, throughout my life here in Montgomery County, I've experienced racism, I've experienced challenges. Many of you have heard the report about how I was stopped at a grocery store a little over a year ago and asked if I had paid for items as I was leaving. This is my neighborhood grocery store that I always go to. And, you know, those kinds of things happen. You know, do I say and throw up my arms and say that Montgomery County is a bad place because of that? Absolutely not. It means that there's more that we need to do in terms of educating everyone to make sure that they don't make assumptions.
But I think she was referring more to the opportunities for African-Americans than her.
It all speaks to the same point, though. I mean, how you're perceived in the community, because those are community members, speaks to whether or not you have that electability. From my perspective, I can just speak on, you know, my own experience. I represented District 15, which had the lowest level of minority voters in this entire county. So, and they elected me to be their, one of their Maryland House of Delegates. So, I think that the opportunities are there, again, as long as you assert yourself and make sure that people understand that you're defying stereotypes and breaking down those barriers. Sometimes it does require more work to make sure that you're educating people about those types of perceptions or misconceptions, if you will. But at the same time, I mean, do I think that, again, Montgomery County has a problem that's unique from anywhere else in this country? Absolutely not. I mean, you know, there are challenges like this throughout, and I look forward to a day. I hope that, you know, my daughters, as they grow up, grow up in a society where we don't have those kinds of barriers that exist, you know, for folks regardless of, it's not just about the color of your skin, but about your ability or disability, about whether you're of the LGBT community. I mean, all of those kinds of things speak into it. So it's not just about one particular. In terms of Black Montgomery, it really does dovetail into a much larger picture, which is, as we grow more inclusionary, I think that it provides opportunities for all of us to succeed. Any other questions? All right, well, thanks so much, guys. This was great. Appreciate it.